Welcome to the March 16th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Drayman.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute will be led by Councilmember Drayman and the invocation by the city clerk.
Please stand and place your right hand over your heart and join me in saluting our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Honorable Mayor, Council, and fellow Glendale residents, today I ask us to remember two special days. One is more popular than the other, yet both are critical to the makeup of our national character and heritage. March 16th, 2010, is the day the American Library Association marks President James Madison's birthday. Madison is widely regarded as the father of the Constitution and as the foremost advocate for openness in government. For this reason, his birthday is known as Freedom of Information Day. And tomorrow, many Americans, particularly those who trace their ancestry back to Ireland, will mark St. Patrick's Day. This holiday has transcended its religious significance and has come to represent a day when we acknowledge the immeasurable contributions of Americans of Irish descent to our nation, our national culture, heritage, identity, and history. We pray for a safe holiday for our brothers and sisters of Irish ancestry, as well as ask that our actions tonight, as the city's deliberative body, be such to live up to the standards of President James Madison. Amen.
We have your report.
The agenda for the March 16th, 2010, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, March 11th, 2010, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
At 3:00 is presentations and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of March 23rd, 2010.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask, Bob McFaul, Assistant City Manager.
How quickly they forget.
Everyone's having problems with names. I'm here mouthing my name to him.
I thought he was gonna say that guy over there.
It has been so long.
Does everybody know what we're laughing about?
No, and we won't right now. March 23rd, next Tuesday, the Housing Authority in the afternoon, there's no specific action items, but there is a redevelopment agency meeting where there is one item. This is a public hearing. This will be for the Director of Community Redevelopment Housing to present a report regarding the owner participation agreement for properties located at 212 South Brand Boulevard. This would be a resolution accepting the proposal from the Museum of Neon Art, otherwise known as Mona. There will also be a joint public meeting in the afternoon. This will be the City Council and the Glendale Housing Authority. And this will be to hear a report from the Director of Community Redevelopment and Housing regarding the development of an affordable multifamily rental housing project proposed by City Lights, L.P. This to be located at 327-331 West Salem Street and the Salem Street Parking Lot Number 12. That evening at 6:00 is a regularly scheduled city council meeting, although it will take place in another room that would be discussed earlier. In fact, all these will take place in another room. And there will be two action items. The first is a report from the Chief of Police, and this will be regarding the California prison reform, the early release of felons program, and also Locresena heroin abuse and crime trends. Next will be a report from the Director of Community Services and Parks, and this is a report on the update on the boxing that took place recently, and a motion for introduction regarding that. That will be all for next week.
Thank you, Mr. McFaul. Next, please.
At 3:00 B. is the Salvation Army Safe Place Announcement on National Safe Place Week.
Hi, my name is Megan Revada. I am from the Salvation Army, the sponsor for the local Glendale Safe Place program. So I'm here on behalf of Safe Place, which represents this sign, which you might have seen all over town. This is the Safe Place sign. This is a youth crisis safety network. It means that any youth in crisis who feels like they don't have anyone to turn to, or an adult who cares, can call in to our 24-hour hotline or go anyplace they see this sign for immediate help and safety. So youths come to this program for a variety of reasons, many different problems, and we welcome them all, and we're just there to help. It's a network of volunteers, counselors, and crisis responders who are available 24 hours a day to youth. I'm here to talk a little bit about the program and also especially to announce National Safe Place Week. Congress has proclaimed a National Safe Place Week the third week of March, and that is this week, the 14th through the 20th. So we are celebrating National Safe Place Week along with 144 other communities across the country. Glendale and the Foothills area, however, is the only safe place local program in L.A. County. So the youth in this county are very, the youth in Glendale are very lucky to have this program and this access to immediate help if they need it. At this time, we're looking for other youth groups who have not heard about this. I am presenting in the schools, but other youth groups and other creative groups that would like to hear the Safe Place message, we're here for them. It's free. Youth can get help, so if there's any youth groups that you guys know of, any church groups or after-school programs, I would love to make a presentation. It helps keep our kids safe. And just a reminder, any child can go to anywhere they see this sign around town, the local Burger Kings, Domino's, all the fire stations, police departments, all the public libraries, the Star Car dealerships, and many others, including a new Burger King in Locresena, so we are expanding up there. I do also have a video for parents and teens that may be watching, so you can get a better idea of the program. Thanks for allowing me to come and share about this program.
Thank you very much. I'm familiar with the program. You do a great job, and I happen to have some friends that their son used one of the locations. This was years ago, but it worked for him.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Thank you.
We have a video as well, I believe. Life can be pretty hectic. If you're a young person having problems at home or other trouble, don't hit the streets, just look for one of these Safe Place signs. They're on businesses, fire stations, even buses. The people at Safe Place care, and they know what to do. They'll call somebody who can talk to you about what's going on and get you help. Safe Place, where you can get help fast.
Very good. Okay, next, please.
At 3:00 C. is Keep America Beautiful to present First Place Affiliate Award.
I'd like to call up Connie Lee Bren, or I'm sorry, Connie Lee and Bren Yak.
That's fine. Thank you. That's what I said when I married him. Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, and Mr. Starbird. My name is Connie Librenjak, and I represent Keep America Beautiful, a nationwide organization dedicated to preventing litter, reducing waste, and beautifying communities. Each year, we recognize the outstanding efforts of our affiliates through our Keep America Beautiful Awards Program. Tonight, I'm here to present you with First Place Keep America Beautiful Award for communities with a population of over 200,000-plus. Now, a little bit about your accomplishments. For the past seven years, Glendale has participated in Keep America Beautiful through your affiliate. The Committee for a Clean and Beautiful Glendale. This group consists of volunteers who work alongside staff from neighborhood services, public works, and community services and parks to provide programs to keep Glendale clean and beautiful year-round. This past year, the committee partnered with the Coalition for a Green Glendale, a local grassroots environmental group, to transform a vacant lot into the city's first Echo Community Garden. What was once an eyesore for the neighborhood is now the Monterey Road Echo Community Garden, where over 20 families grow their fruits and vegetables. This is also the first community garden in the state of California to use recycled water for crop irrigation. Congratulations on that. Through the Helping Hands Program, the committee partnered with Hope Worldwide, a community service organization to rehabilitate four properties which were existing code enforcement cases. Volunteers put in sprinklers, fixed irrigation pipes, planted grass, and painted the homes of four senior citizens without the means to correct the violations. Next, the community is a staunch advocate for graffiti removal. As such, it operates TAG, Terminate All Glendale Graffiti, which removes graffiti from private property. Coupled with neighborhood services, efforts to remove graffiti from public rightaways in Glendale remains nearly graffiti-free. Again, congratulations. The committee operates a number of community cleanups and beautification projects throughout the year. These include the Great American Cleanup Day, Foothill Community Cleanup Day, and numerous tree plantings and campus beautification projects. A recent high-profile project was the replanting of the Fremont Park Memorial Rose Garden, which will be showcased during the 2011 International Rose Convention. In school, civic education programs such as I Love My Neighborhood poster contest and the Middle School Junior Ambassadors instill civic pride and environmental stewardship in Glendale's youth. Through programs such as your Adopt a Block and Gem Property Maintenance Awards, Glendale residents do their part to ensure that your neighborhoods remain of a consistent high quality. These are just a few of the reasons that we have selected Glendale, California, as its number-one affiliate in communities with a population of over 200,000-plus. On behalf of everyone at Keep America Beautiful, I would like to congratulate you, the committee, and the staff on a very well-deserved First Place Award. Thank you very much for your time. And now I'd like to invite you, Mayor Quintero, and members of the board to receive this award.
Well, it's beautiful, but just to be clear, the mayor hasn't done anything. It's the members of the board and the staff that make this work, so congratulations. All right, next, please.
Next is Councilmember and staff comments.
Councilmember staff comments. Ms. Friedman.
I have a couple of comments. First, I was really happy last night to be able to attend the Scholastic Bowl at Glendale High School. Mr. McFaul was sitting next to me, and I can confess to everybody that Team City of Glendale, I think, came in fifth out of the, out of four, yeah. We weren't actually competing, but we were trying to, you know, go along with the students, and boy, did I feel dumb. We have a credible group of high school students who are just complete brainiacs out there, and they were fielding questions for math, and art, and literature, and all kinds of subjects, and I was really amazed by the breadth of their knowledge and their enthusiasm, and not just for the teams, which was five students per team, but every school had a very good representation of their classes, and they were there to cheer on their particular teams. So everyone did great, and it was very, very close, but Glendale High ended up winning on their home turf, so congratulations to them. Second, you guys may, everyone may have noticed that the census has arrived. I got mine yesterday and sent it back today, and I just wanted to remind everybody that it's very important that we all do our census and get an accurate count, because all kinds of programs from the federal government and state government are linked to that count. So it's very easy to fill out. All you have to fill out is the names of the people in your household, and that's pretty much it. It's a stamp, so you don't have to even put postage on it, you just drop it back in the box. And just to remind people that a census worker is not going to come to your home, they're not going to ask you any personal information, they're not going to be asking for social security numbers, bank information, or anything like that. So if anything like that happens, call the police, because they're not real census workers. So please get the word out there to everybody to send those census forms back. And then last, this Sunday, starting at about 9:00 a.m., I'm going to be at the Montrose Harvest Market all morning, giving out information about the League of California Cities Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act, which is an act that's going on the ballot in November to protect local municipalities like Glendale from having their local funds raided by the state. So come on out, and I'll have lots of information to give out. I'll also be collecting signatures to get this ballot measure on in November. And also, if you just want to come by and say hi and let me know about any of your concerns, or just introduce yourself, that will be fun, too. And to that end, I would like to ask my colleagues to, please allow me to place for consideration for the council, a resolution that would be in support of the Local Taxpayer Public Safety and Transportation Protection Act of 2010. So if anybody would second that, we can have the staff bring that back sooner rather than later.
Discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any comments from anyone else? Mr. Drayman.
Just a quick question or reminder to ask if we have proceeded on anything with regard to the Emerald Isle Speedway.
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Drayman, we have. I've had a discussion with the police chief, and he was going to dispatch units to begin the patrol process. I directed my staff to do speed surveys and traffic counts, which started this week. So once we digest that information, we'll be able to, together, begin to look at what options we have available to us.
All right. Just to remind, my concern is that we've done enhanced enforcement before, but unless it's permanent, which it can't be, it just reverts back to just blowing through the stop signs there. I mean, it's just like they're not even there.
Okay, Mr. Starbird.
Steve and I are raising our hands for the same reason. Go ahead, Steve. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just want to take this opportunity to remind everyone that this will be our last meeting in these chambers for the next two months as we embark on our refurbishment project that we had previously discussed. All council, housing, and redevelopment agency meetings, along with all boards and commissions who regularly meet in these chambers, will all be shifted over next door to the Municipal Services Building in Room 105, 106, which, for those who may be familiar, is the planning hearing room, and will be there up until our next, our scheduled first meeting back here will be June 1st. So we'll have postings on the Internet, we'll work with the Clerk's Office to make sure that any public notices indicate that, we'll have signs on the doors, we'll have signage out in the plaza to let folks know, but I just wanted to remind everyone this will, this will be our last night in this chamber, as it looks. Steve, the address for that building? 633 East Broadway, and it's, again, Room 105, 106, first floor of that building.
That would be the corner building on, as people say, the corner building on stilts, the garden underneath it.
And residents can park in the same locations they park when they come to City Hall, just right next door.
Okay, I have, I wanted to talk about the Downtown Dash, which was an overwhelming success, as it is every year. I didn't attend last year, but it's just interesting how, over the years, it keeps getting bigger and better. So I want to thank Glendale Adventist, the different sponsors, all of the volunteers, a lot of city employees have also volunteered their time. It's a 5K kilometer run and a walk, as well as a bike ride, and it really turned out well. Ms. Friedman was there on her bike, and next year, I plan to participate myself. And my mom and dad always taught me not to brag, but I did want to announce that I did come in. Number one, I started the event with the starter's gun, and then I was the number-one contestant. After putting the gun down, I was number-one heading straight to Porto's for a café latte and scrambled egg cheese omelet on Cuban bread, so it was just perfect. Beat everyone there. But all of the merchants were, all the merchants were very enthused. I mean, it draws, brings people to the downtown, so the little restaurants and cafes were full. The public parking lot there on Orange Street, I literally had to drive up to the very top floor, so people were aware that that was the place to park. So anyway, congratulations to everyone, and I'm sure there'll be even more people there next year. Next, Mr. Clerk.
Next is the consent calendar and the following routine, and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of the council or audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before a motion is proposed. On 5A, we do require the abstention of Councilmembers Friedman and Mayor Quintero.
All right, I don't have any cards to pull any items, so... Mayor, move the consent calendar at 5. Ms. Friedman and I will abstain from...
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
6 would be oral communications.
Okay, this is the public presentation portion of oral communications. I'll start with Madeline Rackley, followed by Renee Leesk.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Madeline Rackley, and I'm a resident of the city of West Hollywood, but I'm also Board President of the Metropolitan Master Corral, and I'm here to, in that capacity, to invite you to our upcoming concerts. But I'm especially pleased to announce that we will be joined by your fabulous Glendale Philharmonic Symphony for these upcoming concerts. The program includes the title piece, Welcome to All the Pleasures by Henry Purcell, the Frim-Fram Sauce, five Hebrew love songs, the gospel-inspired Nothing's Gonna Stumble My Feet. It's just going to be a magnificent concert. The first performance is this Sunday, March 21st, at Congregation Colommy in West Hollywood at 3:00 p.m., and the second performance will be the following Sunday, March 28th, at 7:00 p.m. at Hollywood United Methodist Church. Information about the concert is on our website at MetroSeens.org. I want to thank you especially, though, for your support of the arts. Rusev Lamberiakov assures me that the city has supported him and the orchestra, and is particularly appreciative of all that you have done. I am also going to leave with the city clerks some materials for you about the concert, and I hope that you will join us. We are really looking forward to this first collaboration with the orchestra and hope that it is the beginning of many such collaborations, so thank you very, very much. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We're all very enthusiastic. Renee, followed by Leon Mayer.
Good evening, City Council and representatives of the Glendale City Government. My name is Renee Leesk. I'm here from the Glendale Democratic Club to invite everyone here and everyone watching on television to a forum for the candidates who are campaigning to represent all of us in the 43rd Assembly District. All the Democratic candidates will be at our forum on Thursday, March 18th, that is in two days. The moderator is our esteemed City Councilwoman, Laura Friedman. The forum will take place at the Pacific Park Community Center, which is located at 501 South Pacific Avenue here in Glendale. Refreshments will be served at 6:30, and the forum will begin at 7:00. Thank you very much.
Could you repeat the dates?
The date, the date is Thursday, March 18th, that is, two days from tonight. Thanks again.
Leon Mayer, followed by the U.N. Global Initiative.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, Lee, members of council staff. My name is Leon Mayer. I'm here to make three announcements. First of all, on behalf of Kiwanis, we're having the Safety Car Seat Check this Saturday, that's March 20th, 10:00, at the Board of Education, Glendale Board of Education, and appointments are necessary for anybody. First of all, you have to bring yourself, you've got to bring your car seat, and you've got to bring a child. And anybody who comes, you have to have an appointment. So call Jerry at 818-726-9945. That's Jerry Benton, 818-726-9945. And here's the number again, 818-726-9945. You have to make an appointment to be taken care of there, and it's important that you get taken care of there. Now, short announcement on Armenian events at the library. These are on Thursday, March 18th, my dear brother, a postcard exhibit by a famed historian. This will depict 100 years ago, before the genocide, 1906, 1910. You'll be interested in how the Armenians and Turkish people were getting along in communities in Armenia, I mean, in Turkey at that time. March 24th, Ravaged Armenia. This is a silent film that was taken, done concerning things that were in existence right after the genocide through the eyes of a two-, three-year-old girl. March 31st, the archaeological studies that we talked about before by famous archaeology, archaeological person, who will talk about these archaeological finds in the Mideast and in the Armenian area. And then finally, April 11th, Sunday, 3:00, a fine program commemorating the 95th anniversary of the Armenian genocide. That brings us to the major event the Friends are putting on, that is, Pat Hay, uh, Pat, Tom Hayden coming to the library on April 7th, 7:00, Wednesday. Tom Hayden is going to talk about his book, The Long Sixties, From 1960 to Barack Obama, and everybody's saying, how did you get Tom Hayden to come to the library? The same way we got Shane Fonda, except there's no connection now. Different people, different times, and Tom Hayden has been called the person who changed America, National Correspondent of The Atlantic, the single greatest figure of the 1960s student movement, according to New York Times Book Review, elected at the California State Assembly in 1982, served in the Assembly and the Senate for 18 years, and since that time, he's been writing, he's visited Vietnam, and you'll see this book. I'll bring it next time, I'll show you the book. It's a great time for people from all walks of life to listen to all different opinions that we all should share together and talk about, and that'll be April 7th, 7:00, at the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a number of speakers from the U.N. Global Debates. I'll call their names. They can all come up together. Jeff Park, Gina Oh, Joseph Song, and David Yu, and Lisa Yun, and Susanna Kim.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Jong Yu Park.
My name is Gina Oh.
And we are here representing the 12 members of United Nations Global Debates, In Hope Academy team. Okay. As a quick recap, the U.N. Global Debate is a project, it's a sector of the People Speak Organization created by the U.N. Foundation. It's a public charity in support of U.N. causes and activities. The U.N. Foundation is an advocate for U.N. and a platform for collecting resources, peoples, and ideas in order to help the United Nations solve global problems. And each fall and spring, high school students in over 90 countries participate in the global debates by hosting a public discussion or a debate on a specific global issue. Schools also take their debates to action by organizing local service projects in the communities, getting the attention of local press, engaging their elected leaders, and creating thought-provoking videos about the issue at hand. There were numerous schools involved internationally, but as of right now, with all your help, we are leading as number-one ranked school internationally for the Fall Term Project.
And so we would like to thank Mayor Frank Quintero, members of the council, and leaders of our community who took time out of their busy schedules to assist us in this significant cause. You helped us spread the word on the devastating effects of climate change and helped us, 12 high school students, become a lasting influence in the community. We would have never been as successful as we were last semester without your help. Now, this semester, we are tackling a problem that directly impacts the entire world. The topic we are addressing is whether or not developed countries of the world should provide more aid specifically for climate change adaptation, whether in money or resource, to developing countries where climate... to developing countries where climate change is taking its biggest toll. And so, the obvious but often forgotten truth is that protecting our environment is not just a science, it's an issue, an issue that directly impacts the lives of parents, childrens, business owners, leaders, members of the community, and the list continues.
Hi, I'm David Yu.
I'm Joseph Song.
So, to prepare for this topic, we are researching the causes and effects of natural disasters and finding methods for people to adapt to and possibly to prevent and avoid them. So we're also enacting community service projects that will spread awareness of this issue so that the information will reach others.
Our first progression into the topic will be our public debate that will allow people to see the advantages, disadvantages, and effects of the future plans that could be or should not be implemented to assist climate change adaptation. We will be representing individual countries and debating based on factual circumstances relative to the involved countries.
Hi, I'm Lisa Yun.
And I'm Susanna Kim.
So, for example, the disastrous earthquake in Haiti and Chile has devastated the world. Is it a moral obligation that we, as American citizens, should provide aid? Will financial assistance truly be of aid for such countries in the long run? What are the best methods in dealing with climate change mitigation adaptation? These are various perspectives of the debate. In addition to the debate, we joined with PAVA, a nonprofit organization dedicated to our environment, in beautifying Griffiths Park while providing brochures and informational speeches to raise awareness of the circumstances that surround us locally, nationally, and internationally. It would be great if we have the chance to join in the efforts in beautifying the Glendale community as well, so please let us know.
So, the public debate that we are talking about will be held on Friday, March 26th, at 6:00 p.m. at the Glendale Central Library Auditorium. Mayor Quintero, councilmembers, leaders, and the members of the community, we know free time is a rare circumstance for you. However, we ask that if it is possible that you join us in our public debate and help us make a difference in our local community. And although the focus of our debate is based on a more holistic view due to its global influence, we believe that these are issues that would be just as important locally. The presence of our local leaders would not only encourage, but also, as a very list, instill the start of an environmentally friendly attitude. Some of our members last week had the opportunity to learn about the crucial issues surrounding the Glendale community, such as limitations on smoking areas and the possibility of a new highway. Thank you, leaders, for keeping the health of our community a main priority. Although we are currently only high school students, we firmly support the cause to protect our environment, which in turn protects our families and friends. If there is any way we would be able to assist in any form, please feel free to give us suggestions. We ask for your unconditional support, and as we attempt to achieve our goal of taking the initiative to join the effort to protect our environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Let me just say that I did have the opportunity to attend the first debate which took place on Wilshire Boulevard, or off of Wilshire Boulevard. It was very, very interesting. They did a wonderful job of presenting the cases, both sides, and then I suggested that they come to the Glendale Public Library, and here they are. We're going to get a chance to listen to them, but they're doing a great job. I also participated in a sort of demonstration at the Americana where they had all of these recycled products that they made themselves, that they were giving out to the shopping public. Everyone was very appreciative, they got everything done. The parents were there, it was a very cold day, but everybody showed up and stayed to the end, so I think all of you are doing a great job. They're all basically students from the Glendale area, La Croix sent area, so we're very happy to have you here. Thank you. And let me just mention their mentor and sort of leader isn't here tonight, but that's Hannah Oh. She does a really great, or maybe she is here, okay, she can raise her hand. She does a wonderful job of steering the students, and she'll be moving on to get her advanced degree, but in the meantime, she's doing a great job. Okay, Mr. Clerk, next, please.
Next, at 7:00, we have adoption of ordinances. At 7A is ordinance recommending sections 30.40.020, 30.47.020, 30.47.030, 30.47.075, and 30.61.010, and adding sections 30.64.015 of Title 30 of the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to design review, case number PZON 2009-007. This was offered on March 9, 2010, by Councilmember Weaver.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is before you for adoption and makes various changes to the design review process as you discussed at your last meeting. Now before you for adoption, staff is recommending approval.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay, Mr. ...
Mayor, I move 7A.
Need a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8, under action items, at 8A is city manager regarding establishment of a 24-hour city access telephone number. At 8A1 is motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Starbird.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, let me ask John Taktalion to give you the staff report. John?
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the City Council. During a recent City Council meeting, staff was directed to research options for establishing a 24-hour hotline for residents to be able to call 24 hours a day to report incidents which occur after normal operating hours. Based upon our existing resources, staff has identified the ability to establish such a program by collectively utilizing staff from cities, Neighborhood Services Section, the Public Works Department, and the Glendale Water and Power Department. By doing so, members of the public will be provided 24-hour access to a live city representative. Currently, residents can contact city offices Monday through Thursday between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 5:30 p.m., and on Fridays from 8 a.m. to 5 p.m. While the infrastructure to manage after-hour calls from the public currently doesn't exist, the city has successfully utilized an internal process for dispatching appropriate personnel to after-hour field incidents through the use of call-out lists. Currently, Public Works Department and GWP regularly update and coordinate their respective call-out lists, which are utilized for contacting the appropriate personnel when an immediate response to incident is deemed necessary. These call-out lists include records for Public Works and GWP Department staff, each division's crews and managers, GWP troubleshooters, safety officers, public utility contacts, and various contractors working within the city. Under the proposed programs, residents will have the opportunity to call an automated phone number 24 hours a day, including weekends, to report incidents ranging from water and electric concerns, illegal construction, fallen tree limbs, and traffic signal malfunctions, amongst others. Based upon the category selected, calls will automatically be routed to the appropriate department for intake and response during normal operating hours. If calls are made after normal operating hours, including weekends, calls will either be routed to the Public Works Yard attendant or the GWP Yard attendant depending on, I'm sorry, the GWP Yards call center, depending upon what time it is. Upon receipt of a call, a determination will be made as to whether an immediate response is warranted or if it would be more appropriate to log the caller's concern and allow the responsible department to follow up on it the following business day. For calls which require an immediate response, the call-out list will be utilized to dispatch appropriate personnel to the incident. Such incidents could include calls for illegal construction, removal of protected trees, or anything that poses an imminent hazard to the public. On the other hand, calls for services which would likely not require immediate action may be ones involving unrepaired potholes or non-emergency requests for tree trimming. These concerns would be logged and transferred to the responsible department for response to following business day. There's a number of benefits associated with the implementation of a 24-hour automated hotline. First, residents would only need to memorize one phone number to report all types of incidents. The automated system would be fast and simple to use. Callers would choose from specific issues and be routed to the responsible department as opposed to having to go from one department to the other, try to identify which one is appropriate, want to deal with their issue. Neighborhood Services staff is already familiar with the city's functions, and they already utilize or possess the ability to issue stop-work orders in instances where they have to. So for them to be the initial contact point during business hours would be beneficial. And Neighborhood Services staff currently employs two weekend inspectors who are assigned a pre-arranged schedule on Saturdays. As a result, if Neighborhood Services was to get a call on Saturday, those inspectors would be able to respond to those violations as they occur. However, on that, there are a couple of drawbacks to the proposed plan. While Neighborhood Services inspectors are available to respond to these unscheduled calls, it's likely that their existing routine enforcement activities may be impacted. Additionally, if we begin getting quite a number of calls on weekends, there will likely be a need for additional staffing in the form of customer service representatives to answer calls, as well as hourly employees or hourly inspectors to actually respond immediately to these incidents as they occur. Under the proposed plan, city believes we can provide a basic level of service by utilizing, again, our Public Works Department, our Glendale Water and Power Department, and our Neighborhood Services Section. We would just be selective on what we would respond to on Saturdays and Sundays, especially on Sundays. If it's an immediate issue, somebody will respond, but if it's something that can wait until the following day, then we'll do that. At this time, staff is seeking council's approval to establish a 24-hour city access phone number. If approved, the program can be operational within 30 days. We need that time to actually address some final logistical issues and some staffing issues as well.
Comments or questions? Mr. Weaver?
Will there be an attempt to get an easy-to-remember number, like 548-4444, you know, something easy?
Councilmember Weaver, yes. We actually have a number picked out, I just didn't want to release it yet because we don't have the recording in place, so people who call it might think they're going to be getting somebody to respond, but that won't happen for a couple of days. But it will be a simple number to remember, like Neighborhood Services' number.
Mr. Friedman?
I had sent, I think it was Mr. Zern and Mr. Starbird, information about a website called CClickFlix.com, and when I went in there, I noticed that people were already using it to report things in Glendale, although I don't think anyone on our end is monitoring it. Is there a way that this can tie in with either that site or something similar so that we don't have the calls? Maybe we divert some of the calls to an internet site?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Councilmember Friedman, we're looking into that to see. There's a couple of different things we have. We have our Quality of Life team, and we have some different email and call-in numbers for that, so we're going to work with ISD and see how we can coalesce this all together. But I had heard about that, and when you brought it to our attention, looked into it, and it is intriguing. We'll just have to see how it fits into our overall program.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor, I have a comment to make about that website. I was familiar with that website, and I think the city manager forwarded that to a number of us, and I visited it. It's, as a tool for the callers to go to, is very easy. However, we would need to make a further assessment of the level of expectation that such a website would raise and the kind of staffing that would be necessary to address that. It seems like a great tool, and a lot of people would use it. However, the response time, we would have to do further analysis to be able to answer that question.
We're looking at...
Okay, I think it's a great idea, I'm very happy we're going to coordinate these efforts. Lots of things go on on the weekends, and this will be a good way for the public to get used to letting the city know about it.
Mr. Mayor, I'll add, we're going to monitor this, once again, implement it, and we'll report to you periodically on the results.
It'll be interesting to see how many illegal activities on the weekend start getting reported.
So we have a motion here for your approval.
I'll move 8A1.
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Friedman, yes. Najarian?
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8B is Director of Human Resources, LiveScan fingerprinting. At B1 is a resolution authorizing access to state and federal-level summary criminal history through LiveScan technologies.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the item before you is a resolution authorizing the city of Glendale to receive criminal history information from both the state and federal LiveScan database for all applicants for employment and volunteer positions at the city of Glendale. We currently utilize the LiveScan technologies in looking through the state of California database solely in these circumstances, and what tonight's action would do would be to merely extend that to the whole federal database through the FBI. Our concern, obviously, would be that right now, we're only getting a piece of the information relative to any potential job applicants, criminal background that maybe, may have occurred in other states as opposed to just simply the state of California. There's a secondary component of this, why this is somewhat urgent at this time, is an assembly bill, 2917, was passed recently, which requires that all EMTs who are hired through the state of California following July 1st, 2010, will have to be part of, they'd have to be LiveScanned through both the state and federal database. So that would affect all of the firefighters that we hire, as well as the ambulance operators that are part of the new BLS program. In addition to the use of the LiveScan technology for employment purposes, we also utilize it for the issuance of various business permit licenses at certain establishments, amusement arcade establishments, the massage establishments, pond shops, taxi drivers, all currently are participating in the LiveScan. And again, this action this evening with this resolution would extend that as well to the FBI database. There is a small cost to this, which, at least for the employment end of it, Human Resources Department will be accepting that cost, and it is manageable within our budget. We, however, do think it's certainly worthwhile to have the extra security clearance from a nationwide standpoint, so therefore, we're seeking your approval of this resolution.
Raymond?
I just didn't know if you wanted to entertain a motion at this point.
Oh, yeah, I think we're all in agreement. It's a good idea.
If that's the case, then I will, I'll move the item at 8B1.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At 8C is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding approval to enter into contracts for two demand-response pilot programs with North American Power Partners. At C1 is motion authorizing city manager to execute contracts with Southern California Public Power Authority.
Mr. Steiger, why don't you give us just a brief explanation for the public?
Okay, Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council, I'm pleased to offer a program tonight that is our first smart grid-related program and will net benefit to Glendale Water and Power, both monetarily and in peripheral benefits. And let me just explain that. Essentially, what this program will do, it will reduce system load during certain time frames. The financial piece reduces load based on pricing of energy at any given time, and the firm piece of this program relates primarily to system peaks. So when we have peak days, the system is automatic. The customers that sign up for firm participation in this program are required to reduce load, and it's done through an automated system, through smart grid. So there are benefits to us, both financially, from an energy standpoint, and peripheral benefits. By that, I mean, I'll cite two examples. Last year, we had the station fire, and then we had the other fire that occurred in the Silmar area. In both cases, GWP's transmission capacity was reduced, and we were very, very close to having to go to rolling blackouts. This program would help offset those kinds of emergencies. So not only is it an energy-related program, a financial program, it also has peripheral emergency benefits to us.
Are there any questions or comments? Another excellent program, but I have a...
8A1. See, I'm sorry. Let's get right again.
And a second.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Weaver?
Aye.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Mr. Steiger, I'll read it into the record, please.
Thank you. 8D is General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding request additional appropriation of funds for Bloomberg LP News and Data Services and extending agreement for three years. D1 is motion authorizing the expenditure of additional funds for the existing contract number 104445 with Bloomberg LP News and Data Services for a total amount not to exceed $70,000.
Mr. Steiger.
Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council, the Bloomberg system is the system we have used now for the last seven years as the market guide on a day-to-day basis for doing our energy trading. As you're well aware, GWP trades in excess of $150 million a year, so we feel this is a very prudent expenditure.
Are there any other vendors? Just curious. Just curious.
There are. There are. There's Platts, there's a few others, and we have looked at those, and we've evaluated those over the years. But Bloomberg continues to be a little bit ahead of the curve in allowing us to be a little bit more flexible with BlackBerry activated reports. And also, Bloomberg is probably the leading reporting mechanism for energy market trends.
Questions?
I'll move 8D1 now. Got it right this time.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Thank you. Next, please.
At 8D is Director of Information Services Regarding Google Fiber Network to the Home Opportunity. At E1 is Resolution Ratifying and Endorsing the Google-for-Glendale Effort.
Mr. Starbird.
Mr. Mayor, Ed Fraga, our Director of Information Services Department, has been heading up an effort to attract the attention of Google in a prototype project that Google has undertaken. Let me have Ed explain the program to you, and we're looking for your support of our submission of the application to Google. Ed?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, no one needs to introduce Google, but the Google program that we're talking about is a special one that was just announced in February, February 10th, in which Google is looking for a community in the population range of 50 to 500,000 in the United States in a moderate climate that has what they call, quote-unquote, "local resources." GWP would be one of those for us, that would be interested in hosting a 1-gigabit-to-the-home network, which Google would provide, at competitive rates, meaning competitive to whatever is there. Now, what they are proposing is Internet services. This is not cable television services, but it would be Internet services. And why do they want to do this? They want to do it in one or more locations in the United States. Why do they want to do this? It's because they're looking to have the United States break out of its current slump in terms of broadband Internet service throughout the country. We are now last among the industrialized countries of the world in this area, and their business is all about future uses and greater uses of the Internet, and so they want to see us move forward in that regard. There may be other reasons that they want to do this. They certainly want to see what would the future hold and what could occur. We believe that Glendale has a lot of the elements that they're looking for, and we think we have a very good chance. For one, when you talk about great bandwidth, principally what you're looking at is things like video, full-motion video, high-definition, 3D full-motion video, bordering on moving into virtual reality kinds of situations. Those are the ones that need great bandwidth. We have here the entertainment industry. We have already made some forays into discussing this with the entertainment industry, and they seem very interested in this. In addition to that, medical uses, the doctor visit at home via the Internet. We have some very, very good hospitals here. Educational uses of it, distance-learning uses of it, scientific uses of it. All of these are in and about our community, and we think that, in addition to the fact that we are in a, one of the largest metropolitan areas in the United States, an area that the media will pay a lot of attention to, to what's going on here, and we are, shall we say, not the city of Los Angeles, who is too large to do this in any case. So we believe that it's worth pursuing, and that's our proposal.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions? Ms. Friedman.
I just have a couple of questions. What are they, how would this bandwidth be delivered? Is it a cable? Is it sort of a wireless? They put a giant antenna in the middle of the city. How does it work?
It would be a fiber-optic network. It would be fiber-optic to the home, meaning it would actually literally go into each resident and each business. What they would be interested in from the city is the city's assistance in making that possible. In other words, for example, pole access. We have about 70% of our electric meters are provided, are serviced by pole attachments. That is the cheapest, fastest way to put fiber up. They are looking for something very cheap, very fast. They want to do this in one year. So that's another reason. We have 14,000 poles in the city. That's another reason that would make us very good.
So then, would individual residents opt in and opt out, so they wouldn't have to get it if they didn't want to?
Absolutely not. It's a subscriber situation, and like they say, it's at competitive prices, but much greater bandwidth. To give you an idea, 1-gigabit bandwidth is on the order of 200 times what we currently see in cable.
And what other cities in the area are competing for this?
That's a very good question. We don't know for certain. We have heard that Pasadena may be interested, though we haven't seen anything. We have heard of a few other cities around the country. It's famously, Topeka, Kansas, made a splash with naming themselves Google. We don't think that's a very serious idea. Durham, North Carolina, looks like a serious contender. There are others that we think are not, that have made quite an effort. Lansing, Michigan, Rochester, New York, which don't have the weather that they're looking for. So we don't know how many are out there.
Now, I know that you've put a website up.
Yes.
Do we know if Google's looking? I mean, do we know if they've looked at our website?
We don't know yet. Actually, our application, besides the website, we have to submit an application online, and that is due March 26th, at which point they will have then the reference to our site in the application. And frankly, this application goes into a database. They're going to run analysis of that, and then they will see who falls out of that, and they'll be looking at our website and...
My last question, for the time being. Do we know if any of our major entertainment companies that are based here in Glendale are willing to put their two cents in or reach out at all to Google?
Yes. We haven't gotten those formally, but we have indications that all of the entertainment industry here is very interested in doing that, and that we are expecting that we may have some letters of nomination. We would encourage residents to go to www, this is a commercial, dot Glendale, Google for Glendale, that's a four, number four, Google for Glendale, dot com, and there you can see not only what we're saying about ourselves, but you can get the link to the Google site and nominate Glendale to bring 1-gigabit fiber to your home.
Thank you.
Any other...
Cover's up.
Okay, well, I, yeah, actually, let me hear from the public. We have a noted information age Speaker, Bill Wiseman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, and the public. Well, I don't know about noted information age. I will say, I think I've been very lucky in my career in the computer industry to have been working during the time when we've seen some tremendous advances in telecommunications and computer networking. Back from when Samuel Morse first invented a way of signaling over electrical wires, we've come a long way. We've been able to modulate signals. We've been able to increase bandwidth. And I just want to say that I'm totally in support of this initiative. I know it's going to be very competitive. A lot of other cities are going to be trying to get it as well. But I think that if we can get something like this for Glendale, it opens up a huge number of possibilities in terms of new businesses people can open that are Internet-based. Right now, through existing, most existing Internet connections, like the one I have through Charter Cable, your upstream bandwidth is typically throttled because they make the assumption that you're pulling down information from servers at the center of the Internet, and you're a client out at the edge of the Internet. Having this huge bandwidth pipe available to citizens will enable them, in a sense, to reverse that model, to run their own servers, provide their own services. With this much bandwidth, many, many things are possible. The City of Glendale could have multiple television channels. They could have one for every department. Not necessarily that I'm advocating that, but it's, the bandwidth, the bandwidth just enables a whole bunch of stuff. And I remember in the mid-1980s, when I worked at JPL, JPL was attached to the Internet by a single T1 line, which is 1.5 megabits per second. This is a 1-gigabit pipe, and the possibilities, I think, for entrepreneurs and other people who are going to take advantage of this are very significant, and I hope we can get this for the City of Glendale. Thank you.
Of course, Mr. Fraga and the teenagers here are the only ones who have any idea what you just said.
Mr. Starbird.
I was going to say that this is one of those issues that, depending on whether you understand what Bill just said, determines on which side of the technology gap you happen to be on. I'm on the one that is still rooted in cards with holes that you put through a card reader. But I will tell you that this initiative has lit up a whole segment of society that is tuned into these issues. And frankly, one of the first reactions I had from a young person who makes their living in computer technology was that whatever community in California gets this is where they are going to move to. I mean, this has that kind of an impact on people that tune into this and use this. We've made an effort not to incur direct costs in preparing the application. There've been a number of people in the organization under Ed's leadership that frankly are very excited about this, and have put in a great deal of extra time and energy to help prepare the application. It has a lot of interest in the business community. Ed has surprisingly had very strong favorable reaction from JPL, even though they're not here. They have a lot of employees who live here. DreamWorks, Occidental College would like to support us in our effort. The college is here locally. So it has generated a lot of interest, and Ed has really done a tremendous job of helping to shepherd this. So we would recommend your support.
Yeah, well, I would like to actually, I mean, in addition to the entertainment companies, then, we've got Nestle's North American headquarters, IHOP, public storage...
We're reaching out to all of those.
...Orislon, these are all good, so we are reaching out and coming on board.
No, that's what I was going to say.
Okay, Ms. Friedman.
And, you know, if it comes down to where you, do you think you need to spend those incidental costs and do something a little bit more souped up? I think that you should come back and talk to us, because I wouldn't, I would hate to lose this and then say, "Well, if we had only gone to council and asked for, you know, $15,000, we would have gotten it." So I don't know if that's the case, and maybe we don't need it, but, but I...
There you go. You opened the door.
I know. I opened the door. That's what I'm saying. I don't know if we need it, but whatever we need to do.
Well, I know Mr. Fraga and Mr. Starbird and numerous other people have been working very, very hard in this pursuit, and I think it's worth it, absolutely, all of the staff time, and if we need to spend money to do it, this is absolutely worth it. And, I mean, the fallback position would be that, you know, maybe we're number two or number three on the list, but I think we have a good shot at it. I think the demographics, the size of the city, the mix between residential and the commercial end of it, and then also even within the residential, some of these condominium projects and so forth, the upper-end apartment buildings, I mean, they've got some real urbanization that they can test it all. Single-family homes, homes in the hillsides, you name it, they can test it all. So let's keep our fingers crossed. Mr. Draymond.
I was just going to make a motion.
I'll second Ed, but like, are we going to put it on Channel 6, too?
Resolution.
I mean, Charter provides it, but can we put, can we put it up there on, you know, where it, write to or contact or whatever, because you want the community to sneak it on?
Actually, that's a very good idea. Okay, Mr. Draymond made the motion. Councilmember Weaver, second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Weaver.
Aye.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Turning to oral communication, this is a portion where discussion is limited to five items not on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Members of the council may question or respond to speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Scott Peir.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, and I have been a pretty happy resident of Glendale for 50 years, having a few odds and ends, but overall, when people ask me, "Where do I want to live?", and I say, "Nowhere, but where I'm at." Tomorrow, the Irish will celebrate, a lot of people will celebrate their Irish ancestry, and a lot of them who aren't Irish enjoy the day also. But they are especially enjoying the freedom of religion and speech that we all enjoy here in America. The genocide on the Irish by the English continued from 16th century through till, what, 1919? No, I think even after that. And they were slaughtered in the streets of their own cities, just because they insisted on their religion and their beliefs in their country, and also, they wouldn't give up their properties, whether they were just little farmers or shacks or whatever. They refused to give up their land to the English and so had to die for it. The churches were, they were told that their churches, they could either become the state religion of England, or they were burned down. Any protesters to that act were immediately killed, and a few lucky ones, shall I say, were imprisoned or sent off to Australia or Canada even, and America also, on the slave ships that came out of Ireland. And they were buried in mass graves in Ireland. I was there, I saw them. They weren't advertised at all. You have to look for them. But, you know, overall, the Irish celebrate, and they enjoy this day, and a lot of other people do, too. My saying goes, "Life's too short not to be Irish." But we do not allow our children to skip school and go driving willy-nilly up and down the Glendale streets, through traffic lights and everything else. This kind of conduct that is, happens on other holidays or occasions, costs the city a lot of money in public education by, because of the absenteeism of the students. And I don't think it should be in any way ever encouraged, because we need as much money as we can get for our public, for our education. And we should all enjoy each other's holidays and not feel that some of us are entitled to this or to that. We all should enjoy our holidays, whatever they are, whatever religion and whatever nationality. One of my things that I was over in the GWP building, the pictures that were taken for the last Plaza night on the plaza, there are some marvelous pictures in there that were taken, some by children, some by older people, and they're wonderful. I happened to go through there. I'd seen them before, but I hadn't had time to study them. They're really terrific. They deserve to be really shown over and over, or however we can advertise, because they're all about what Glendale is and what it's about, and what the residents of Glendale feel about their city. That's what these pictures show, is the love of Glendale, and I think it's terrific. So anyway, thank you. That's it. And of course, my other long, big item, my other thing I talk about is the large-item pickup, bulky pickup. And believe me, the guys are doing a great job. When they get called, they're right there, and we are very lucky to have that service. Free service. All you have to do is call. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Scott Peir.
Good evening. I'm Scott Peir. Thank you for listening. I'm here to talk about solar energy. I'll continue from where I left off before, showing how difficult it is to help clean up our environment by telling my story of how I've been unsuccessful in trying to build a solar system in Glendale. In 2007, I selected an architect to design a solar system in my garage, and I selected a solar contractor. In October 2008, GWP approved the plans. We thought we were weeks away from construction, but planning rejected our application, and the city attorney wouldn't help us. In March 3, 2009, I came to the Glendale City Council for a second time to oral communications, and at that point, Councilmember Frank Quintero asked why nothing had happened yet. That was over a year ago. On March 24, 2009, I went to the city council meeting... and at that point, Councilmember Frank Quintero asked why nothing had happened yet. That was over a year ago. On March 24, 2009, I went to the city council meeting, which included the planning solar report prepared by Chris Bagdikian, which was on the agenda. And you can see the video on the website. It's over four hours long. At 2 hours and 10 minutes in, there were four public speakers. All four were in favor of solar power. At 2 hours 31 minutes, planning made the claim that my garage has a variance, which it couldn't because it was built in the '40s before the setback codes were written. 2 hours 39 minutes, Councilmember Yusefian wanted the city attorney to call the state attorney general to see, as he asked, what Mr. Brown says. That was almost a year ago, and the city attorney, Howard, has said nothing about the attorney general response. I got that response in writing. It says that the city is, quote, "in direct violation with the law." Notice also, the state attorney general website includes this statement from Mr. Brown. "I am committed to doing everything in my power to ensure that California meets its greenhouse gas reduction targets. I suspect that Mr. Howard is aware of the attorney general's opinions as well as the state law, and that's why he didn't contact the attorney general as he was requested by Councilmember Yusefian." At 2 hours 41 minutes, Councilmember Yusefian also asked the city attorney, Howard, what the intent of the law is. Mr. Howard spent about nine sentences, depending on how you count, claiming the intent of the law is not clear. However, the second sentence of the law clearly states the intent, stating, "It is the intent of the legislature that local agencies not adopt ordinances that create unreasonable barriers to installation of solar energy systems, including, but not limited to, design review for aesthetic purposes and not reasonably restrict the ability of homeowners and agriculture and business concerns to install solar energy systems." Mr. Howard could have more quickly read the intent for everyone to hear. He's consistently claimed familiarity with the law since November 2008. So here he's asked a question, which was so simple, it sounded like a trick question, and he didn't answer the question. So we see Mr. Howard failed to contact the state attorney general, as requested. He failed to inform the council as to the intent of the law. He failed to mention Government Code Section 65850.5, passed the Assembly by a 77 to 0 vote. Not one legislator thought that the law was so unclear or ambiguous that they would vote against it. He also failed to mention legislature is aware of Glendale's noncompliance, as shown by their archiving Glendale's code in the legislative record. He also failed to mention that there's a series of at least three laws on the subject with increasingly specific language, showing the legislature's frustration with cities like Glendale that flaunt the law. So it's clear that the legislature and the attorney general want the reduction of pollution to trump local rules, and the deputy attorney general stated that Glendale is in violation of state law regarding that. It's clear that the legislature intends for there to be no zoning restrictions on solar systems, as the deputy attorney general stated in her letter. The only thing that's not clear is why the Glendale city attorney wants to defy and mislead the council, break state environmental protection laws, and deny the rights granted to residents in the Solar Rights Act.
All right, that ends oral communications. Are there any comments or responses? Mr. Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. We are looking at the letter that was written to the city immediately prior to the planned Planning Commission hearing to address those issues. We've paid for the entire legislative record, which is through a service called Legislative Intent Service, to pull all these documents, just to further confirm that. I think the council knows that obviously it's not our intent to defy state law or to defy any direction of the council. And I would state that, just specifically with respect to the comment regarding the attorney general's, requesting attorney general's opinion, that's something that we can't do. We'd have to request a state legislator to do that. It was suggested by Mr. Yusefian, when he was on the council, that we'd do that, and we said that if the council wanted to do that at a later time, we could put together the proper paperwork. But that was never an actual direction by the council to take that. And that's to request a formal opinion from the opinions unit of the attorney general's office, which hasn't, has never been given with respect to this issue. But back to just sort of the main substantive issue, we are looking at it thoroughly. We are, again, reviewing the letter that was submitted to the city back in February, and we'll be analyzing that when the item comes back to the Planning Commission and the council in the coming months.
Yeah, we want to be clear, Ms. Hargani, that we are working on this issue in terms of solar power placements, et cetera.
Yes, we are, and the Planning Commission is diligently actually looking at this in detail, and they have asked for additional information, which we will be providing them.
And in terms of that letter, I would hope that you're not just looking at it, that you're speaking with the author of it to get some clarity.
We are. We are. And we've, I've attempted to make contact already, and before we go to the Planning Commission, I'll definitely, we'll be having a conversation with her.
Okay, any other comments? Next, please.
Sorry. Mr. Mayor, just one other comment with respect to the minutes. Actually, it didn't get a vote of the majority of the quorum, so those will be coming back to you next week, so just want to let you know that. Right?
Yes, all right. Next, please.
Is there any new business?
There is no new business.
Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We are adjourned.